Ms. Allison, are you ready to go? I'd like to call the meeting of the North Rock Planning Commission to order, please. Would you please call the roll?
Thanks. Velasco, Chambers.
Present.
Phillips.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
White.
Here.
Here.
Move to excuse those not present.
Motion made and seconded to excuse those commissioners not present. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Please turn off your cell phones if you have them with you at this time. And administrative item number two has been withdrawn. Mr. Spencer, you want to talk about that?
We've got a little technical difficulty here, so if we could hold on a second. But yes, I could talk about that. He's found another location. So he's withdrawing and has found a location that's zoned correctly for what he's wanting to do.
Okay. Under the public hearing, item number two will be withdrawn. You have been submitted a copy of the minutes from our previous meetings. Are there any additions or corrections?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to be approved as submitted. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll move right into our Development Review Committee report. Mr. Don Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Clifton. I'd like to thank Commissioners Vandy Velasco, Edward Wallace, and Junior Phillips for stepping in at the last minute, so we had a quorum at that committee. The Design Review Committee met and considered Velasco's addition, Lot A, Block 23, site plan review of a new building for St. Mary's Catholic School located at 1518 Parker Street. The applicant was present and agreed to items one through nine and subsections, and Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This application be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners on the application? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
SD 2019-13, Column Salmon subdivision, lots one and two, replat and site plan review of a restaurant at 4311 McCain Boulevard. The applicant was present and agreed to items one through 13 and subsections, and Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. I'm Wendy Hunter. I'm here representing Raising Cains, and I just wanted to let you know how much we're looking forward to being part of your community. Really excited about it.
Give us your name again, please.
Wendy Hunter. H-U-N-T-E-R.
Okay, Ms. Hunter. Well, very good.
Thank you.
Welcome to North Little Rock. We're glad to have you.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Any other comments, any of the commission? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item SD 2019-14, North Shore Business Park, Block 9, Lot 21RR, site plan review of a building addition at 5440 North Shore Drive. The applicant was present and agreed to items one through six and subsections, and with that Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This application be approved as submitted. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item SD 2019-15, Park Hill Edition, Block 200, lots 68AR and 68BR, replat of residential lots. The applicant was present and agreed to items one through eight and subsections, and Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This application be approved as submitted. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Any comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item SD 2019-16, The Meadows at Ashley Downs, Lot 1, preliminary plat of a residential lot near the corner of Colonel Maynard Road and Upper Steel Bend Road. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through seven and subsections, and Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This item be approved as submitted. Anyone in the audience like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
That concludes the report of Development Review Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. We'll move right into our public hearing. First item today is conditional use number 2019-8 to allow a tire shop and auto detail business in a C4 zone located at 923 East Broadway. Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Come up and give us your name for the record, please.
Thank you, Board. I'm Larry Carpenter. I'm a resident of Little Rock. I'm a business owner here in North Little Rock. I office up at 121 South Buckeye Street, and I've been driving this Broadway strip for about eight months now and decided it was time to buy property and hopefully bring some additional value to that stretch along Broadway.
Very good. You have talked with the Design Review Committee, and there has been various points made about how you will develop this. Are you in agreement with those?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Mr. Chambers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to point out that in addition to the conditions noted here, Design Review Committee added two conditions which the applicant agrees to, and those are that beginning at 60 feet along the northwest property line and continuing for 60 feet, the applicant will install an evergreen hedge or opaque fence to screen the shipping containers that are proposed for storage behind the primary building. And he also agreed that he would make the east side of the east shipping container conform to the appearance of the primary building, either using metal or hardy board or EFS or other material, so that it looks a lot less like a shipping container. And those are the two conditions we're adding.
Mr. Chambers, I didn't get in the Design Review Committee meeting that we restricted that to just the east side. It was my impression that we were doing the container.
Couldn't see the other sides of it once you screened it to the northwest, so that's why it wasn't a primary concern. We can certainly add that, but...
When you're going east on Broadway and pass Taco Bell...
But you can't see it. Not with the screen.
What was the...
Green screen starts here. Goes this way. Okay, so that's the screen. So going east, you're never going to see it. And then the east side of the building is here, so going west, you'd have to get a peek at the...
John, Mr. John.
Sure. Just for clarification. I think what he's asked, we've agreed to... His question would be this one here.
Yeah. And I'm saying the evergreen screen along here should take care of that.
Well, we had two other commissioners on that. I'd like to hear what their impression of what we agreed to was.
You know, we discussed both versions of that, Mr. Chairman, but I believe Mr. Chambers is correct.
Okay.
That was my understanding of what we approved.
Okay. Very good. Well, I'm sorry. I was wrong on that, so go ahead. Do you have it written as Mr. Chambers? Okay, good.
Good.
Any comments from anyone in the audience on this application and the improvements that have been added? Any comments from any of the commissioners? Mr. White?
Hours of operation till midnight?
Yes, sir.
Is that unusual for a tire store to be open till midnight?
I don't see it ever staying open that late. I just chose something just a little out of... A little further than I would anticipate. The Taco Bell next to me is all night, so I'm certain that if it closes down by midnight...
I was just curious about the...
Yes, sir. No problem at all.
Okay. Ms. Chambers?
In case anyone is wondering why we mitigated the use of the shipping containers, it's so we can set a precedent that in the future, if other persons want to use shipping containers, that they should be attenuated, not be as obvious shipping containers on the property. So that was the intent.
Good comment. Okay, Ms. Allison, on the application, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Velasco?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass. Mr. Carpenter, get with Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what your next step would be.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, and welcome to North Little Rock. Item number three... Item number two was postponed. Item number three, to allow a storage building sales business in a C4 zone located at 1815 East Broadway in North Little Rock. Thank you, young lady, for being such a good helper.
My name is Skeet Forrester. I'm representing Burnett's Affordable Buildings. We would like to put a lot in your city. I think the biggest concern is how close can we go to the sidewalk?
Mr. Burnett, the subdivision committee... Review Committee has recommended, Commissioners, has recommended a 20-foot setback for these buildings from the existing fence, and the applicant is proposing to do six foot from the existing fence to where he places the building. So it's my understanding that you want to tell us why you need the six foot as opposed to the 20.
I don't so much need six foot, other than the doors are three foot. It left three foot for anybody coming by that's looking also. The purpose for putting it as close to the fence as I can get it is naturally for display. And also, there is a gate on each side 20 foot wide. For our trucks, our trailers are 40 to 50 foot. Most of them are 40. And so by putting them as close to the fence, our drivers can also go in and turn their gooseneck trailer, so they turn quicker than a bumper pull type trailer, to keep them from sideswiping or hitting our other buildings. If I put them back 20 foot is what I'm looking at, or if I go back 40 foot, like the council that I talked to earlier in the last month, if I go back 40 foot, our trucks and drivers can't turn quite sharp enough, and also, there's not as much room in behind the buildings to make the same turn, so I'm questioning if I can get the drivers in and out safely without, you know, damaging. Our portable buildings are painted. They're not an ugly building. They're not trashed. They're new. We build them in the edge of Oklahoma, Roland. So that's the purpose. Necessarily, the six foot, we don't have to have it six foot. We can go back 10 and still... I know we can still cut the backside of it. If I split the difference, I'm a little worried for our driver's sake. That's my main concern.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burnett. The building setback on East Broadway is 40 foot, and we believe that the fence is setting on the building line now. So if we required the 40-foot setback, he would be back 40 foot from that, which would make a definite hardship for him and his trucks to put the building 40 foot back and then a 16-foot building and...
20 foot.
20-foot building, and that'd make him 60 foot. So I can recognize his hardship for needing a variance, but as we... Or as the Design Review Committee looked at it, we determined that a 20-foot setback would still allow him sufficient room to get his trucks in and out, and it would still look better than the buildings right up on the front of the building line. I think that was kind of what the consensus of the Design Review Committee was. Any other thoughts? Mr. Chambers?
Yes, sir. I'm going to ask that we vote on the setback separately, so that it's not a pass or fail on the entire issue.
Okay.
So I move that the setback set for the display of the buildings be set at 20 feet from the fence.
Okay.
What we said...
Then we will need to vote on the application with the exclusion of condition number one?
No. No, this is setting condition number one. Number one's blank.
Yes, I understand.
Correct. You'd want to get approval to have the use first.
Yes.
You wouldn't want to turn down the use after you vote on the distance. Not that you're going to turn it down.
Right. I mean, I just figured that would be the way... The stepwise way to go was approve the distance and approve the use.
I would think to accomplish what you're wanting to do is we could set, number one, to be 20 foot and vote on that 20 foot, but if you're going to be inclined to vote for Mr. Burnett, then you would vote that down. So what Mr. Chambers is wanting to do is fine. We go ahead and vote on the application, but not include the number one, and then put the figure in number one. Mr. Mosley?
It's an interesting... It's just an organizational thing. So if you were to vote on the use without noting how many feet is in number one, and then you were to secondarily... And say you approved that, and then you were to vote on 20 foot, and let's say that passed. Clearly, the applicant wants six foot. Is he getting... Are you considering... Or is that fail to consider at all, his request for six foot at that point? Are you going to need a separate motion and a vote on that? I mean...
How should we proceed this, then?
I think voting on the use, and one question I would have Chairman Clifton, is the applicant still interested in this if he gets 20 foot?
Very good question. Mr. Burnett, question to you. Could you live with 20 foot? And if it is not 20 foot, well, then you would possibly be turned down, and you could take it to the City Council and ask for their permission to override the recommendation of the Planning Commission to ask for your six foot.
If I moved the buildings back 20 feet, the gate on North Plum would be of no use to me to bring my trailers back out, you know, safely. So I would have to figure...
Could you... I'm sorry.
Okay, sir, I'm sorry.
According to the diagram you've got here, you've got a building sitting right there in that corner. If you removed that building, would you not still have plenty of room to make your turn there?
What I'm referring to, Counsel, is if I moved the whole row of buildings back 20 feet, that means my driver will come in off of Broadway. And as he comes around the backside, there is 86 feet total from the office to the fence towards Broadway. So if I bring the buildings back 20 feet, then I have another 20 foot. That's 40 foot. That leaves my driver 40 foot to make that right turn, and then he has to come back up and then back out the side. The gate on the North Plum is on the side of the fence, so he has to come out and around, back in like this, and back out. So that's the fear that I have going out. The coming in is not an issue. The other thing is if I set the buildings back too far, and my office is here... Oh, I'm sorry. My... A little bit of wonder is will my salespeople be able to see anybody out in the front of those buildings in their cars or if they're walk... I mean, there's a lot of... I don't really know, guys. I've never been here before.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Mr. Mosley?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask the applicant a question?
Sure. Yes, sir.
So you understand... Sir, what was your name again?
Skeet Forrester.
Yeah. Mr. Forrester, you understand that the setback requirement is an issue of public welfare? It's to protect the public welfare, and the proposal here is to give you... Concede 20 feet already to you from the 40 feet.
Aye.
So I don't know that there's been respectfully an answer to the question of will you accept 20 feet as a setback, so that they can vote on this? Or are you absolutely stuck on six foot?
No, sir.
You are not stuck on six foot?
No, sir.
Okay.
Those are just some concerns, sir.
So that's... Leave it up to the commission now to do what they want.
Okay. Ms. Chambers?
I just wanted to tell you that this is a recommending body, so this isn't the end of the line. No matter how we vote yes or no, you're still going to the City Council, and you can make your case yet again there.
I know.
Okay? So this isn't the end of the road.
Ms. Velasco?
Do we need clarification that we're talking 20 feet off Broadway, or do you want 20 feet off the back property too?
20 foot off the front fence on Broadway.
Just Broadway.
Which is the property line.
Yes.
Yeah. I understand, but that's not what it reads.
Right. I understand. That's what we clarified.
And I didn't know if we needed that.
My motion was 20 feet from the fence. That was my motion.
I know. But does the fence not come to the back also, which would then put him...
I apologize for not clearing the front fence.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Come up and give us your name, please.
If you allow him a six-foot setback...
Give us your name. Come to the microphone, please.
My name is Guy Hutslar. I own the property. If you allow this gentleman the six foot he's asking for setback, he's going to be further from the street than the building next door.
Yes, sir. If that helps any. Okay. Thank you. And that was one of the things that was brought up in the Design Review. The existing building is probably no more than 10 foot from the edge of Broadway after Broadway got widened there now. Would someone be interested in possibly amending this to 15 feet as opposed to the 20 in lieu of trying to work with him? Or we okay the 20?
Well, really, we're only moving it back, you know, 12... 14 feet from what he was wanting, so he's wanting six, and now we're 20, so we're only giving up another 14 feet.
Okay. Okay, then.
Maybe it's 40 feet, you know, but I mean, like we talked about, it's... These are not permanent structures. They're, you know, displays and come in and come out, so that's why I'm amenable to the 20 feet.
Okay. The item number one on the conditions to be considered would be to insert the figure number 20.
Correct. I did... I had a second to my motion, so it failed for lack of a second.
So anyone else in the audience like to speak on this application? Any other comments from the commissioners?
Aye.
Mr. White?
You know, whether it's 10, or six, or 15, or 40, or whatever, who's going to regulate it anyway? When you get right down to it, are they going to go out there every day and take a tape measure and measure, put that building in there, and say, "Oh, you're 9.4 feet"?
Back to code compliance again.
So that's a code issue, and you know they're not going to do it. So my concern is safety of people on Broadway and the safety of his driver, so I don't see a big deal with 15 foot personally, if it will get that truck in there easier, because if it gets that truck in easier and get it out, that's going to make it easier to forget because he's going on Broadway. And we've got to remember, they're going to be coming in and out of Broadway, so the safer that is is probably one of my major concerns, because I don't think it's going to be regulated that close anyway, because look at the cars in that picture, you know, that are in there. They're a lot closer than six foot or four foot. So I think we ought to... You know, I know we said the difference is 12 foot or 14, whatever, but I think 15 foot's the... Should be the number, personally.
It may be. Let me ask a question.
Mr. Foster?
Commissioner Phillips, you know, you're probably one of the person in this room that's more qualified to answer this question because of your business. I mean, do you think it's legitimate that we need 20 feet or 15 feet there? I mean, what's your opinion about this?
I think the 15 foot would be better.
Okay. I'd support 15.
Somewhat of one like a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Did this be worded as a 15-foot front building setback for the applicant on this application? Motion made, and it's been seconded. All in favor of 15 foot, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
We need to call a roll, ma'am.
Call a roll, Ms. Allison.
Excuse me.
Velasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Okay. Mr. White?
And the only reason is so that, like Mr. Chambers said, we're only recommending any of that, and I think it's important. The City Council knows we're unanimous on that 15 foot, and we thought it through.
Very good.
Thank you.
You know, I think make sure we all understand, maybe we talked about this in our Development Review Committee, but you know, this is a special use, not a conditional use, which these conditions go with the applicant, not with the land, is my understanding, so...
Okay. Very good.
You understand? Good done.
Anyone else have a comment on this application? Please call the roll as the application reads.
Thanks. Velasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass with the 15 feet, so if you'll get with Mr. Spencer, he can tell you what you might need to do next.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. Good luck, and welcome to North Little Rock.
Thank you.
Next order of business is a public comment or adjournment.
No.
I got one comment.
Mr. White?
Mr. Shaw. Let me ask you a question. I've gotten a couple of calls, people in Lakewood, and got one email, and it's the Corps of Engineers. On the apartments that are on North Hills, are they asking to fill in all those wetlands around that?
They've gotten permission for what they're doing right now. I think they're wanting to... And again, we haven't seen anything. Our planning hasn't seen anything, and city engineer may have seen something, but I think they're wanting to expand one direction and want to fill in to that side, which I think is north.
Yeah. Here's my comment on that, just for public record, and if it means anything, is since they started building that, the side of the hill that they built up that faces the interstate, it continues to collapse, is what it does. There's a big... I mean, right now, if you drive by there on the corner, it's just a huge dugout. And we've had a lot of big rains for the last year and a half, and since I drive by there every day, and I don't want them to fill in those wetlands around it, because what we're seeing around the country right now is all these rains, and then all of a sudden, we got a whole neighborhood that's underwater because of something we did upstream. And that neighborhood would be... I don't know what they call it now, Dark Hollow or even the railroad. I noticed when we had the heavy rains because of the water that's coming, you know, all the way from Indian Hills and McCain into the Lakewood Lakes and then down at Waterside, it can't take anymore. It almost goes over that bridge now. I mean, you know, if that... And with more water coming into there and more water coming in from the side of the apartments on both sides and then going underneath to the Redwood Tunnel, I personally... And I'm not an engineer, and I remember we had the engineer came in, and he said under the current situation, it's fine. But now my concern is, I don't think it's fine anymore. I think we're setting... The city is setting themselves up to flood neighborhoods or flood the railroad, as far as that goes, because it can't take much more water. If you look at the rains that we have and where all that water's coming from, whether it's from Northeast High School or from the other apartments, and remember, they're going to build more apartments up on that hill once they rent these out. So...
Do what?
Yeah. So this is just the first phase, so will the city engineer or the city or the Planning Commission or City Council, will they have input on this Corps of Engineers, or will Corps of Engineers say, "Yeah, buy some land in Lone Oak, and you can fill those in," even though it may not be in the best interest of the city of North Little Rock? Overall, it may be as far as money and jobs and stuff like that, but as far as flooding, you know, you look at Houston, and you look at Oklahoma, I mean, just look at the areas around the country, and I think we're setting ourselves up on things by filling in some of these areas that are vital to our city, because we're doing more and more. And sooner or later, one day, that big area across the street from Pentecostal Church, someone's going to develop that, and then we're going to really have a problem. So just... That's just my comment, because I am having a lot of calls on that, because there's some lady that sent it out to some friends.
I can get the... I don't know your answer, but I'd get the city engineer to get you a response to that.
That'd be great.
Of his involvement with the decision.
Mr. Chambers?
According to the city engineer, current status and the flooding that you see in Dark Hollow, how it almost comes over the road sometimes, things like that... see in Dark Hollow, how it almost comes over the road sometimes, things like that, uh, it's actually a lucky coincidence, I guess, that the pipes under Union Pacific are too small. They've built up a lot of debris, beaver, beaver dams, things like that are on the north side of those pipes, and it's actually acting as a massive detention basin right now. If they ever clean those pipes and let that water loose through Redwood Tunnel, that's when you're gonna have a problem, 'cause I don't think Redwood's gonna be able to take that kind of flow. And you're right, I mean, the more silt that comes off that mountain, the more silt goes into the drainage system. I'm, I'm totally opposed to the expanding the, the, into the wetlands myself. But, uh, once again, I, I agree with your comment. They could buy some land in Lone Oak and say, here's this, let me fill that, so...
Stephen, uh, this is a group, but, uh, way that, you know, for this, way that development is trying to drain, all the water from that development drains to the north side of the road that comes off of North Hills Boulevard. That, what you're seeing, eroding the embankment there towards the interstate.
All the, all the... And, and I, and I agree with...
...drains to the north side of that, and that is...
That'd be the south side, though, in that corner, where...
Let's go to the north side as well, of that road, and that road is, is serves as a barrier for...
As a weir, acting as a weir.
Yeah, a weir, for, that's where their detention is on the north side. So they control it while the inlets and pipes and everything go underneath that road. So that's where all that water goes. It's not gonna go down there. They don't have current government controlling that.
Well, and, and, and that's true, too, but, uh, the first time that, that, that area eroded, they immediately got out there and fixed it immediately, 'cause they knew they had a problem there with some, and now they know they don't have it fixed, so it's just sitting there. The other thing is, you live, you know, you live across from Waterside. You know, one heavy rain and that water's gonna go over, uh, uh, go over the, uh, the bridge there or the highway there, El North Hills. It's close now, because of, you know, because I just, I just think we're asking that area to take on too much water and to fill in wetlands is wrong.
I don't think it ever seen one.
No, I didn't say it has. I said it's close. But I'm, remember, the City Engineer came in and said, this is plan one, it works, I approve it, and I was good with that. Well, now we're slipping in with plan two to fill in some wetlands. So my question that Shaun said he would get is, what does the City Engineer think about phase two of us filling in wetlands and, because we're flooding communities everywhere right now. I mean, you look at it, we're, we're doing it, and the Corps of Engineers is responsible for a lot of it. They're getting sued right now, and I think it's Northeast or Southeast Arkansas by a bunch of farmers for, you know, some issues. But anyway, I just, I just think that that should be a concern of the city. And that's, with that, I'll ask for adjournment.
Okay, one other thing, uh, comments, most of you guys are all way too young to remember that we have a Redwood Tunnel down here, that all of this goes here, goes underneath the freeway, underneath the railroad yards, and goes over to what's called the Redwood Tunnel out in Rose City, and it drains into the Arkansas River.
That's correct.
Under Redwood Street.
And that's the reason I wrote Redwood right there.
And, and Casey Lehman, back a hundred years ago, had funding to widen that Redwood Tunnel. And whatever powers that be that did not want anything disturbed got that killed. And that money that Mayor, uh, Lehman got at that time, I remember it, James, about seven hundred thousand dollars, laid in the bank for years and years and years. It was never used, and then one of the aldermen filed a lawsuit to get that money returned to the citizens in North Little Rock, and they got a check for fourteen dollars.
Oh, fourteen dollars.
Little bit of, that's the rest of the story.
Well, they've had study after study.
Yeah.
To either keep it buried or to o, cut it as an open ditch. And the last study, as I recall, the results from the Corps of Engineers is that there was not sufficient return on investment to do anything about it.
Yep.
An ROI.
I have to ask a question, 'cause it's gonna drive me crazy if I don't know. Is the work, the right work, when they do fill wetlands, they mitigate? Does mitigate properly?
Mitigation is what they do.
No, really, that's not, no, that's not correct. Mitigation is where you have issue, you have issue with it, and you, you do swamp off, you mitigate the issue, you know?
I just wish your mitigation was right.
It's the right word.
They might need to make it go away, you know?
Yeah.
What is remitigation?
Google it.
That's, that's a redo.
It's a do-over.
Yeah, do-over.
Motion made and seconded. We adjourn, all in favor? Aye. Thank you.